First of all, I want to say I apologize for this meeting getting started a little bit late, a little bit late. We had a few minor details that we needed to work out, but I will call this meeting to order. Fairfield County Council, regular session, council meeting Monday, August the 14th at 6:00 PM, Windsboro, South Carolina. If everybody would please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the-
Thank you. Next, we will have the approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we amend the agenda to move the action items 9A, 9B, 9C, as well as item 14D until after item 18 in the executive session.
Second. It's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Let the record reflect seven, zero. Do I have any more motions?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to add the public hearing, item 8D, a public hearing on the application and expenditure for the 2023 Justice Assistant Grant Funds. This motion is being made pursuant to South Carolina Code of Law, Section 30-4-80A.
Second. Explanation for this motion, please.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, members of council, the motion that has been brought before the floor, this is a motion to add an item to the agenda that's already been published and posted. So it's going to require a little bit of extra handling. Back in 2015, back then, Governor Haley signed a law, it was Act, Senate Act Number 11, which provided for the fact that an agenda can be amended after it's been posted and published, but only in the limited circumstances. And in this particular instance, if this is an item that's going to require a vote of council, which it would, then there's the second, kind of, the decision-making process is, was this the final vote of the council? In this instance, because it's to have a public hearing, this would be the final vote on the item. And therefore, because of that, there's a requirement, there's two requirements. First, that the motion to amend be approved by two-thirds of the governing body. So in this instance, five members of the council would have to vote to agree to amend, to add item 8D, this public hearing. Secondly, and most importantly, there has to be a finding of emergency or exigent circumstances. And I'm going to speak for the administrator, as long as she's okay with that. This item just was brought to our attention about 15 minutes ago, that this JAG grant, there's a requirement that council will later on this evening take up, and it would have to vote to approve to allow for the sheriff's office to apply for the grant and receive the funds. And then also, as part of that process, there needs to be a public hearing. Well, apparently, a public hearing was noticed, and that information was put in the newspaper. However, it did not make its way, unfortunately, to tonight's agenda until just now. And so I believe, but it's a determination of the chair and this council, that should this not go forward tonight, there's not enough time for another public hearing to be noticed and put in the newspaper, because the application process, the timelines for that don't allow for another hearing. So that, again, it's up for the decision of the chair to make a determination that based upon these facts and circumstances, that it is an exigent or emergency circumstance, because otherwise, the grant funds that the sheriff's office is trying to receive, they wouldn't meet the deadline, they wouldn't be able to get those funds.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. In accordance with South Carolina Code of Law, Section 30-4-88, the Fairfield County finds an emergency or exigent circumstance does or will exist if the public hearing on the JAG grant is not added to the current meeting agenda for council's consideration and vote before the conclusion of this meeting. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Let the record reflect seven, zero. Now, the approval of the agenda as amended. So moved. It's been moved and properly seconded to accept the agenda as amended. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Let the record reflect seven to zero on the agenda. And for the record, items 9A, 9B, 9C, as well as item 14D, will be conducted under item 18, executive session, and that there will be a public hearing under item 8D. Now, we are down to invocation, Reverend Jim Blackwell, Zion Presbyterian Church.
Mike, thank you for inviting me here tonight. Couple of corrections. My name is Black Welder, W-E-L-D-E-R, and I am from Zion Presbyterian Church. And just as a point of interest, I am the last, excuse me, I'm the last class who did not graduate from Mount Zion Institute. I entered Windsboro High School, I'm the first entry, the first graduating class, and pray with us, because we have our 55th class reunion planning meeting on Thursday. It's hard to believe. Let us pray. Father God, we understand the reality of what we're doing tonight. We thank you for the opportunity. We understand the responsibility that is laid upon our shoulders. We pray for your guidance. We pray for your mercy and for your love as we undertake all of the items that are on the agenda tonight. We pray that each and every one will give over to you all the decisions that are being made for the common good, for the things that need to be taken care of for every person in Fairfield County. Bless us, Father, as we consider all of the things that are on the table tonight. Give us your wisdom and guidance, and give your safety to us as we depart and go our separate ways. For it's in the name of Jesus Christ that we make our prayer. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Black Welder. Next, we are down to approval of minutes, budget work session three of May the 10th, 2023, and the regular meeting of July the 24th of 2023.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second. It's been moved and properly seconded for the approval of the amendments. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Let the record reflect seven, zero on approval of minutes. Item six, public presentation. Nine, item seven, first public comment session. Dr. Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of council. One person signed up to speak, Joe Wilks.
Good evening. I'm Joe Wilks, District Two. I'm here to make a few comments about ordinance number 820. I was here earlier concerning the ceasing of working unpaid roads in Fairfield. It took just a little bit of research, very little, to realize that Fairfield is not the only renegade outlaw out there working unpaid roads. In fact, Lexington County has over 600 miles of unpaid road. Arndberg County has almost 900 miles of unpaid road there to keep up. I did look at the opposed ordinance, and I want to thank y'all for revisiting this ordinance. It seems that it's on the right track, but it's also evident that it's cut and pasted from Richland County, which is okay. Richland County's Article One, Section 21.5 is their maintenance of unpaid roads, and I was happy to be 1.5. They're pretty much forbade them, except for some things that have been omitted. And those things that were omitted cause grammatical and numerical errors that need to be addressed up, and that's the problem with the cut and paste. But anyway, I want to thank you, because the ordinance as written, if it's carried out as written, seems to be a workable and a doable and equitable ordinance for citizens and for the county itself. So again, thank you for your reconsideration.
Thank you, Mr. Wilks. Now, we are down to item 8A, public hearings. Dr. Roberts.
An ordinance by Fairfield County Council authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental sewer infrastructure agreement between Fairfield County, the town of Windsboro, and the Fairfield Joint Water and Sewer System and other matters related thereto.
We will open this public hearing at 6:17. Anybody sign to speak?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. Annette Hornsby-Bruelton.
Good evening. Thank you. I am Annette Hornsby-Bruelton, of the Fairfield County Council, for 20 years, and I want to thank the council for taking the comments. I personally would like to go on the record as being opposed to the local line, the Piper Line, that's being installed across the middle of Fairfield County, in western part of Fairfield County, including Hitch Road, Mossdale Road, Highway 269, any other small roads that we know about that could go up in this county, trying to duck the Sledge Road into Broad River. I am not against growth in Fairfield County. Over 20 years ago, the county bought land in Cedar Creek on I-77. They sold this land. In 2020, council spent 100, my, excuse me, $1.8 million buying the land back on Cedar Creek for a treatment plant. For over 20 years, Cedar Creek was the right choice. It seemed like Cedar Creek, you know, we had three, three years ago, I remember, 2020, Cedar Creek was a hotspot, and that's where the industrial, well, not the industrial part was going, but that's where this happened. And when, this is where the industrial zone is in Fairfield County. So I want to know, why are we, again, abandoning this to pump wastewater, the wastewater we're talking about, halfway across our county, 16 miles or whatever it is, through residential and rural land, to buy more land and to pay for easements for a plant that no one other than the industrial part will get to use? We are abandoned, we spent millions, I believe, of dollars spent on the land and plans to put the plant, which should be in an industrial area, not necessarily on the Cedar Creek or the Broad River, but the Broad, Cedar Creek is included in this industrial area where this wastewater will go. It will, if it goes to Cedar Creek, if I understand correctly, it will have a much cleaner discharge, but less water will go there. On the other hand, to build a waste pipeline across the county through the residential areas to the plant site that will have to be built, or land that will have to be bought, will have, will be less treated, but it will be delivered at this river, and I hire, it could go in more million gallons per day. So let's not get hung up, and let's not take this project, let's not let this project hinder or slow down the development of Fairfield County. Let's be sensible in how we spend our money and what is truly best for the future of Fairfield County, not to mention, I see I have five seconds left, all the money that y'all have spent doing engineering studies about where this wastewater land should go, should it go to Cedar Creek, should it go to Broad River. Let's work together, see if we can do something about this. I truly believe Cedar Creek is where we need to go, because that's our industrial area. That's where we are in the treatment-
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, that's your time. Thank you.
Jeff Schaefer.
Before I start my little speech here, it'll just take 30 seconds. I want to just go on the record and say that the meeting started at 6:06. So if we're going to have an accuracy of when meetings start, it should be listed, not 6:00 PM, but 6:06, just for the record. An ordinance establishing the millage rate for Fairfield County for the fiscal year beginning July 1st. How do we propose things like this? Here we are in the middle of August. Why didn't this get proposed on beginning July 1st? Like, the meeting should have started at 6:00 PM. Things are not on time. We're not doing things on time. And more importantly, I want to know how you establish this millage rate. Did you, do you have plans that you want to discuss with the public and tell us how it came about? Why it's getting raised?
Yeah, Mr. Schaefer, this is in reference to the public hearing on the infrastructure for the sewer agreement, not on the millage. This is a public hearing.
When are you going to get to this subject?
Say it again.
I said, when are you going to get to this subject that's on the agenda?
Well, that was in the first public comment session.
I signed up, did I not?
Is his name on there? There was only one name, Mr. Wilks.
Where am I signed up?
On the public hearing ordinance 817.
And was it ordinance with public number 821? Is there a sign up to that?
No, sir. We ain't got to that public hearing yet.
I'm a little confused. Can you explain that to me? Why isn't it on, why didn't they have a sign up to you for that?
Mr. Roberts. The millage is a first reading by title only. It's not a public hearing on it yet. It would come at a later time.
So we only get to discuss it after it's had a first reading? Second reading, it's been approved? Is that-
Right. Mr. Morgan, can you?
Yes, sir. What I'm hearing, Mr. Schaefer, is, again, he's commenting on the first reading entitled only of ordinance number 821 about the millage rate. And Mr. Schaefer could have made comments during the first public comment session about that, but based upon the information that our clerk indicated, it appears that you signed up in the public hearing portion for item 8A, which is the public hearing as it relates to ordinance number 817. So any public, you're making a public hearing, so it has to be in direct relation to ordinance number 817, which would be the execution of intergovernmental sewer infrastructure agreement. So you could have made the, signed up for the public comment and made comments about the millage rate, but right now, we're on a public hearing, so it has to be directly related to ordinance 817.
Thank you for explaining that. I apologize for taking up time.
We will close this public hearing at 6:25 PM. Next, we are down to item B, an ordinance by Fairfield County Council authorizing the execution of a second supplement to agreement to share costs between Fairfield County, the town of Windsboro, and the Fairfield Joint Water and Sewer System and other matters related thereto. Open this public hearing at 6:26 PM. Dr. Roberts?
No one signed up to speak, Mr. Chair.
We will close this public hearing at 6:26 PM. Next, we are down to 8C. Dr. Roberts.
An ordinance by Fairfield County Council authorizing the execution of a grant and project administration agreement between Fairfield County and the Fairfield Joint Water and Sewer System and other matters related thereto.
We will open this public hearing at 6:26 PM.
No one signed up to speak, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Roberts. We will close the public hearing at 6:26 PM. Next, we are down to item D, second reading ordinance 820, an ordinance by Fairfield County Council to amend and restate ordinance number 674, roads, highways, and bridges, and other matters related thereto.
Mr. Chair, I don't mean to interrupt, but I believe we are still down on the public hearings, because the council made a motion to amend the agenda to add item 8D, which would have been the public hearing as it relates to the expenditure and approval of the Justice Assistance Grant Funds for the sheriff's office. So I believe there could be a public hearing as it relates to that as item 8D at this moment.
Move past that one. We will, Dr. Roberts, will you present that public hearing?
A public hearing on the application and expenditure for the 2023 JAG grant funds.
We will open this public hearing at 6:28 PM.
No one signed up to speak, Mr. Chair.
We will close the hearing at 6:28 PM. Now, we are down to second reading ordinance 820, an ordinance by Fairfield County Council to amend and restate ordinance number 674, roads, highways, bridges, and other matters related thereto. So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion?
Yes, I wanted to be sure that, does somebody else have something? You go ahead.
I'll just, I want to get clarification on this, on this ordinance, that it, has it been changed so that roads that have been main- it has it been changed so that roads that have been maintained for 20-plus years, is that would be continued to be maintained as it had, as it had in the past?
Yes, sir, Mr. Roof, both the prior version and this version had no edits that affected the unpaved roads that are already currently in, uh, the Fairfield County road system. So there's no change to that. If it's a public road, that's dirt road, whether it's paved or unpaved, those roads are still going to be maintained under the terms of this ordinance, yes, sir.
Mr.?
But, go ahead.
Mr. Roof, I, I don't want to cut you off, but let me, let me read something, please, so everybody can have an understanding. I think there's some confusion in the community about what is a common drive. A common drive is private property. It is not a county public dirt or gravel road. We have approximately 90 common drives we maintain. We spend anywhere between $6,000 to $8,000 per month maintaining these common drives. A common driveway is a section of roadway utilized by two or more occupied residents for providing access to a county road, highway, or street. Maintenance of a common drive includes the section of roadway that the two or more occupied residents actually utilize from the county road, highway, or street. Any roadway past this area is not the responsibility of the county. We have heard from the county attorney who has specifically been involved in a case about county maintenance of private driveways such as common drives. The county cannot use public funds for private purposes, and a common drive is private. County council cannot ignore information when it has been provided to us. I have directed administration to work on an application process whereby citizens can request the county to take possession of the common drive and turn it into a county-maintained road. This application will list specific requirements that must be met regarding the condition of the road before council will consider the application.
So in other words, all the citizens that are on common drives, those roads have been maintained for the last 50, 100 years, won't be maintained until their application is applied for and accepted by the county?
Correct. County dirt roads will still be maintained, just the common drives would not be maintained.
But all those ones that have been maintained for all these years won't be maintained anymore until it just passes, until this application, until they apply and it's been accepted by the county?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
Can you explain section 1-5 so we can understand it? Please.
If you'll bear with me, I do not have a hard copy with me, we got a little snafus going on, I may have one here. Okay. Bear with me, I apologize. So the maintenance of unpaved roads, is that the provision, Ms. Warington, you're asking about?
Yes.
Okay, so that is, and I'll, I'll read this out, "The Department of Public Works shall maintain all unpaved roads of the county which have been dedicated for public use, regardless of whether or not the dedication was by law or by usage. Those roads determined to have been dedicated shall be considered to be a part of the county road maintenance system for purposes of ascertaining dedication by usage or by maintenance by the county. All unpaved roads which have been used by the public and/or maintained by the county for a period of 20 years or more shall be deemed dedicated and shall be maintained by the Department of Public Works." That's subsection A, is that the, the language that you're referencing? And what ends up happening is, is in order for that, so that's the language, so again, there's nothing that prohibits the county from maintaining the public, the dirt roads that are in the main, the public system, the maintenance system, whether it's been scraped for 10 years, 20 years, 50 years, or even 100 years, as Mr. Roof has said. The differentiation then becomes because the common drive is a private driveway, then you have to get into the law to determine whether or not there's a series of, of legal requirements before a county can then turn around and claim that by prescriptive easement. That has not been the case because the prior language specifically made the differentiation that a common drive was private property versus public property. So therefore, the common driveway situation, again, is a situation wherein those are private driveways, and hence the reason why that specifically has been taken out, that the county will no longer maintain whatever maintenance that may be, and I don't know what type of maintenance was being performed, but because it's private property and the county can't, and the South Carolina Constitution specifically states that public funds can't be expended upon private property or private, for private goods unless, so therefore, that's why that's being removed from this particular version of the ordinance.
Okay, so how many of the 46 counties have done this, have taken this state? How many have tended to this of the 46 counties?
Well, again, the case that I was involved in was a county in the PD in which they tried to do this exact thing. They had a county maintenance, um, road policy and system, and the court in 1992 pursuant to an order said you can't maintain, whether it's dumping dirt, putting, crushing, run, scraping it, whatever, private property. A new council came in in approximately 2010, tried to amend and add a provision that said, okay, we will allow for one-time maintenance of a, of a private drive in order that public facilities and vehicles, whether it's an ambulance or fire truck, sheriff's deputies, so on and so forth, could access the property. Another lawsuit was initiated, and that was the one in which at that time, the judge issued a rule to show cause and had the entirety of county council come before him and statewide they shouldn't be held in contempt for expending public funds on private property in contravention of the constitution. So that was removed out of that particular county. I believe a commenter earlier noted that this particular ordinance is a, it's been a template, it's been based upon Richland Counties, and Ms. Williams and I were talking about this, Richland had similar language in which they tried to have a one-time go out and, and fix or maintain a private driveway for those very reasons, and then they ended up removing that language as well. My personal, I have not found a county that has an ordinance or a policy that says they will take public funds and expend it and use it on private property.
So all 46 counties have fixed it?
I, I cannot say all 46, I have not done a survey of all 46, but I'll be happy to do that if you would like, Ms. Warington. That's not a problem, I'll be glad to do that, yes, ma'am.
Those, those roads that have been taken care of all these years have, and somewhere in what you read said, used as public by the public and, and they had, if the, if an ambulance been there, fire truck, sheriff, any, anybody, or, but it is, but those roads are being used, yeah, somewhere in there you read about public use. So how do you take that out? And then on the, and then on the, on the flip side, if it's been done for all these years, and anybody can sue for anything, everybody knows that. If they've been taking care of these roads for all these years, and suddenly they're not taken care of, and they're emergency situations, sheriff, ambulance, fire, and they can't get there, is that a, not a potential for a lawsuit in the same?
So the South Carolina Torque Claims Act, which is found at 1578-10, and the South Carolina Code of Laws provides for exemptions, and one of the specified exemptions under subsection 60 is the provisions in providing emergency services to residents of a county. So it specifically prohibits those type of lawsuits for multiple reasons, and the reason being, number one is, well, there's lots of them, I don't want to go into the purview of what the General Assembly says, but they have basically provided an exemption so that way a county could not be sued, and somebody says, oh, I didn't get a fire truck fast enough, I didn't get an ambulance fast enough, whatever, that type of, that type of scenario like you're describing there. As it relates to the possibility that the counties by virtue of treating, whether it's maintenance, dirt, gravel, has somehow converted a private driveway into a public road, there's several legal doctrines that talk about adverse possession and what has to take place, and it has to be continuous and hostile and open and adverse and notorious, um, these are some of the legal elements and required. The prior versions of the ordinance that the county had specifically stated that this was private property. So therefore, by its own admission that the county realizes that it's private property, it's not making a claim sufficient to establish adverse possession of those roads.
Well, if a, if a fire, if a school bus goes down that road to pick up children every day, is that not a public road?
No, ma'am, I, I can't speak for what the school district does. I, I have no control over the school district, they're obviously a separate and distinct entity, and so I don't, I don't know what, whether or not a school bus could go down a driveway, I don't know, I don't think that would, because again, then that would be a claim that the school district would have to make, saying that they have ownership of the road, not the county, because they're separate distinct entities.
So what is Chairman over here talking about that they can do, that people can do so that the county would tend to the road?
Yes, ma'am, and I'll, I'll address this, and, and if administration will, will chime in, that would be good, but what, as I understand it, there will ultimately be a process, an application process, because again, this is still considered private property, and so with some various landowners, I'm just using a hypothetical, if there's a common drive or a private driveway, and there are three residents that live on there, then all three residents would have to agree that they want to ultimately dedicate their private property to the public, and then administration is looking into the necessary requirements such as South Carolina road standards, you've got drainage literal runoff standards, you'd ought to make sure that you have the necessary and requisite right of way in order to get maintenance vehicles, so on and so forth, and, and I, I don't want to speak exclusively to that, but those, that's part of the process as I understand it. Ms. Williams, you want to?
And I'll just chime in and say, I passed out a presentation that is now currently up on the county's Public Works website, which explains what a common drive is, to say very clearly again, this is not all dirt roads in the county, these are private driveways. We have instances where someone will have a long driveway to their house, they'll add a mobile home behind their house, and then they will call the Public Works Department to now take over their driveway because it now meets the definition of a common drive. And so the pictures give you examples of, the black line is the main county road, we blacked out the road names to protect some privacy, but the black line is the main county road, the yellow line shows you the driveway that comes off of the main county road, and as you can see, it's, it's a driveway, it is one or two houses back there, where just because there are two houses, the county for whatever reasons originally said, we will maintain your driveway up into that second house. We also have instances where because it is a private property, private driveway, they will put up gates because it's a driveway, it's private property, and then they will call the Public Works Department, the Public Works Department has to get permission to go past the gate, so it is not a public roadway because no one can just drive up there, it's gated, it's private property. So we wanted to have that examples up on the Public Works website to let people know we are not talking about dirt roads that are already in the public system, that are public dirt roads, we're talking about private driveways that just happen to have more than one person using, more than one household using that driveway. And if they want that to be an actual road, now you have to give the county and everyone in the public permission to use that driveway as a public road.
I don't know, one, one thought about that, I think two houses is not enough to have a, to justify that, probably should be four or five, but, uh, and also if somebody puts up a gate, then that negates it all as well. We're talking about a long timeframe to go through that process.
Because even when, um, the county has current dirt roads, and they get paved through our CTC process, that has to go through a process to even get those roads, because those are already public roads. This would be a common drive, if you now want it to be considered a public road, then you have to accept what comes along with having a public road, which could be that right of way associated with that public road. Some of our common driveways, the utilities stop at the public road, they don't go down the drive because it is a private driveway, and then there may be lines that run from the public road to the different houses that are on that driveway. So it has been very, very complicated working it out, and it has been a little bit challenging for Public Works, knowing that someone adds an additional house, and now they're responsible, if they call, to then maintain what was a driveway.
What would, what about the possibility of list, of us tabling this to have some more time?
That's to the will of council.
Counsel, I know this is very difficult, a hard pill to swallow, but when you've been informed that something you've been doing for however many years is something that is illegal, um, personally, I don't think it takes any more time to make a decision on it. I mean, you get called a lot from citizens, save money, find cuts, et cetera, but we all need to be aware, sometimes those cuts come in places that we are not happy about, but that are necessary, and with this particular one, it's just a matter of legality.
the millage rate for Fairfield County for the fiscal year beginning July the 1st, 2023.
So move.
It's been moved and properly segmented, no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Let the record reflect 7-0. Now we are down to board and commission minutes for information only, Disabilities and Special Needs Board, April the 21st, 2023, and May the 19th, 2023. Item 11, board and commission appointments, none. 12, old business, none. 13, new business, none. And 14, county administrators' report.
Good evening, council. SC Uplift is a nonprofit organization that provides housing stabilization programs to low-income homeowners. In 2021, they received a million-dollar grant to perform, um, low-cost modifications to older citizens in Fairfield, Chester, and Union Counties. We have you with us today, Mr. Kevin Wimberly, CEO of SC Uplift, and Ms. Angela Douglas, Principal Strategist with Douglas Strategy Group. They're here today to update on, us on what, um, was done in the county with some of those funds, and also to talk about an upcoming partnership with our fire service. Hello, how are you?
Again, Kevin Wimberly with SC Uplift Community Outreach, uh, today, and just wanted to update you all, as Administrator Johnson mentioned, we were here in 2021 to announce the award that we received through the Housing and Urban Development, better known as HUD, for the Older Adult Home Modification Program. Since that time, we've been able to provide housing, um, assistance for low-income older adults, 62 or older, um, they had to be owners of their home, and they had to fall within 80% of the area median income, which generally say, for example, was one person could not make more than $45,000 a year, uh, that could get assistance. Uh, we partnered with I-58, another nonprofit located in Chester, as well as Suite 65 LLC, um, who did our assessments, um, in going in to do those modifications. The, um, maximum amount that we could actually, uh, um, do rehab modifications with was up to $5,000. I mean, we provided some numbers and wanted to give you some data at this time on where we are with that process, because we're in the second year, um, of the program, going into our third. We will finish up next year, 2024. And at this time, we've actually had over 45 applications submitted to us in which, yeah, this is Fairfield County only, I'm sorry, in which we actually have 45 actually projects that we can complete total within Fairfield County as part of our goals for the overall project. So 45 applications have been submitted in which 41 have been approved. And as this is July, end of July, 19 applications, projects have been completed and on average, $4,410 has gone into each project here in Fairfield County. The other four that did not receive assistance were considered lost in project, meaning that the home was too expensive for us to just put $5,000 in for repair. So we were looking for additional resources to assist them to get those repairs in the home. And with that in mind, we have a waiting list between our partner, I-58, and ourselves. The actually, the OHMP waiting list is closed because of our application numbers, but we have 24. I-58 provides a due weatherization program. They have 24 clients within Fairfield County that are on that waiting list. And then our organization, we're part of the SC State Housing Trust Fund program, and we have six on our waiting list from Fairfield County. We recently were awarded Community Economic Development Funds. We are a certified community development corporation through the Department of Commerce, and we received funding to provide roof replacement or HVA replacement in Chester, Fairfield, and Union Counties that will serve. And with that, we can assist approximately about nine clients in each county for that funds. And right now, we have nine that have been approved currently and will be completing those projects here over the next six months. Okay, now let Ms. Douglas mention the fire MOU at the time.
Good evening. As Kevin mentioned, we have been limited to $5,000 per home without going through a lot of red tape to get more money approved for each home. So in that, we found that we needed some additional resources, some that we would normally think of, like fire protection, fire prevention, suppression, smoke detectors or alarms, extinguishers and things of that nature. Well, South Carolina Fire Safe and American Red Cross actually do give an allotment to fire departments for smoke alarms. And so we wanted to reach out to the different firehouses, fire districts within this region or within the different counties that we are working in to see if we could partner to make sure that some of our most vulnerable citizens, our elderly, are also taken care of. So I met with Administrator Johnson and Chief Webb a few weeks ago, and we came to the conclusion that this will be a good opportunity for us to share some data. The data is basically a MOU saying that we are giving them our list of at-risk homeowners that would need those fire protection methods. And they would then refer to us once they have gotten those things installed, and we will join Fairfield County into our reports as a partner to the grant. As you all know, being a partner on a grant actually helps with additional grant opportunities. So we wanted to just make sure that our most vulnerable citizens, yes, they can call directly to the fire department. However, we know that that does not normally happen. And speaking with Fire Chief Webb, they have placed 294 as of June, they had placed 294 smoke alarms across the county. And we told them that our 45 would be, you know, pretty much a complete list. One of the things that's different about this particular grant versus a lot of the housing stabilization grants that we have utilized is the inclusion of an occupational therapist. And so the occupational therapist goes in and assess the living conditions with the residents and come back and give us their recommendations. And so we're able to share across our group of affiliated organizations on the things that are needed. And we consider fire suppression and prevention one of those items. So we are looking forward to starting that process, getting that MOU completed. We are reviewing it among the attorneys to make sure that we can go forward. There is no cost involved to Fairfield County for this grant or for the MOU. We'll take any questions.
Just thank you for coming into Fairfield County to help our citizens.
You're quite welcome. We look forward to doing more.
Thank you. And a reminder to council, what was presented is also on this flyer.
All right, we have Chief Deputy Douglas with her, with us today, who has an update on the Sheriff's Office's Citizens Academy, the 1033 Federal Surplus Program, and the sheriff's recent EMS commendation.
Thank you all for the invitation to be here. We appreciate this very much. First thing I wanted to recognize is Sheriff Montgomery really pushes working closely with our fire services, with EMS and all of our first responders in the county. And something happened around July 4th, we had a pretty critical incident occur that I think some EMS folks went way above and beyond what they needed to do or what was required of them, kind of put their lives in a little bit of jeopardy in a situation that involved the unfortunate murder of a young man in this county. But just in the picture that you see up there, of course, that's Sheriff Young there. Sheriff, excuse me, Sheriff Young for 24 years, I apologize. Sheriff Montgomery to the left there, Captain Jennifer Fitch with EMS. Hannah, I'm trying to get the name, make sure that name's right. Hannah Earhart, she's a paramedic. And then Suzie Ledbetter there is a paramedic. To the right is Tim Martin, who's the Deputy Director of EMS. And also not pictured are Maggie Ferguson, who's a paramedic, and Anthony Bookman. But, you know, Sheriff Montgomery just wanted to recognize these folks because, again, they came into a situation where they could have sat back by policy and waited a little bit longer, but they came in and applied some much-needed medical assistance. So we do want to recognize them. So thank you for letting us talk about that. The next thing we want to do is talk about Sheriff Montgomery decided we're having another Citizens Academy this fall. I know there's a couple of people I talked with out in the audience here who've participated in our Citizens Academy, and we certainly want to extend the invitation to them. There's no cost at all to it. I think, I believe Ms. Swerengen says she may attend it, so we're hoping we'll see her there. But it's just, it's a great way to get to know the sheriff's office and everything about the sheriff's office. We give you an overview of basically, you know, where your tax dollars are going. We want you to, we're proud of the way that we think we spend money, the money that's given to us wisely, and we want to show you where that money goes and how the office is distributed. We talk about a number of different things. We show narcotics trends as they relate specifically to Fairfield County, gang-related type things as it relates specifically to Fairfield County. But everything's centered around what happens in Fairfield County. You know, we're not going to talk about some drug trend in California or anything like that. We're going to tell you about things that affect you or could affect you personally here in the county. Several SRT, a tactical team presentation, that's a number of things. And I think that, you know, we're really hoping we get a good group to come. It's a great thing, and obviously we'll extend the invitation to all of you if you want to come. But we always get some great remarks from it, and we're looking forward to hosting that again. And if anybody's interested, they can call the Fairfield County Sheriff's Office at 803-635-4141, and we'd love to have you in this next class. Next, we were asked just to talk a little bit about the 1033 Federal Surplus Program. You know, I always hesitate to say, I never like saying anything's free because nothing's free. But what I do like to brag is I think that we worked to redistribute stuff that was meant for somewhere else and redirected to Fairfield County. And what we're very proud of is over the last probably five or six years, we've gotten over $1.2 million worth of equipment through the 1033 Federal Surplus Program here at no additional cost to taxpayers. Some of those items include about a $700,000 or $600,000 armored vehicle, which is a major part of our response plan if anything ever happens at the VC Summer Nuclear Station. We've outfitted our entire office with patrol rifles through this surplus program, about $35,000 worth of them in equipment, no additional cost to the county. We've got a fitness room that we're really proud of, but our training center that has about $20,000 worth of fitness equipment in it, TVs, fans, everything was got through this. Again, that didn't cost our county any additional dollars for that. We've also got a lot of first aid equipment, latex gloves, tourniquets, bandages. And again, we're talking about EMS earlier. Unfortunately, we've seen a lot of violent crimes lately, this whole state and nation has. And our officers are there many minutes usually before EMS is there. And our folks unfortunately have to use these tourniquets, these bandages and stuff to start first aid treatment till our EMS professionals get there. So these are just a few of the things, but again, a little over $1.2 million worth of equipment supplies that we've gotten for the county at no additional cost to the taxpayers. So we're really proud of that. And again, any questions you have about either of those, I'd be glad to entertain those.
You have the dates of the class yet?
Thank you. Yes, I do. I blanked right over there, thank you. The Citizens Academy is, it's every Tuesday for six weeks, and it starts from 6:30 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. It starts, the very first ones on September 19th, 6:30 at our training center. It's the new old armory, however you want to call it, on Old Airport Road. And the last date is Tuesday, October 24th. And again, no cost, that's one thing we're proud of. We don't wine and dine you, you're not going to have meals every time. We're doing this as low cost as possible. And we usually have some folks who are attending it, who volunteer, who brought food and coffee and stuff to the classes.
What was that time again?
6:30 p.m. to 8:30. Six Tuesday nights in a row.
Do you sign it before or you just show up?
No, ma'am, we do need, I'm glad you asked that. If you contact us, we'll send you an application. And what it happens, we had one back in the spring, and we ended up canceling it because we didn't have enough folks. Right on that date was starting, a bunch of people contacted us and said, we were coming, and we didn't know, so we canceled it. So we certainly need an application that just allows us to have a good head count and make sure we do have enough folks and know who to look forward to come.
And didn't you tell me something about you can ride with y'all if you sign something or something?
That's great. Well, that's totally something separate. We do have a ride-along waiver form. We've had folks come, had interns, college interns. Every summer, we usually have a college intern that comes and they'll do some ride-along. They'll sign with the Patrol, Investigation, Narcotics, let them see different, the units that we have. But any person, any member of the public can contact us, obviously we want to be an adult. And there's a ride-along waiver form you sign, and then the sheriff approves that.
Do you promise some action if you ride?
I hope not. I never hope for action.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Chief Deputy Douglas. And you may be coming right back up. The sheriff's office would like to apply for the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant JAG Grant, as you all heard earlier. It requires prior approval from county council in order to apply for this grant, though. Fairfield is eligible to receive $11,219 of federal funds and would like to use these funds for body cameras. A local match is not required, and we can have Chief Deputy Douglas come back up and answer any questions about the grant if you have any. This is an action item.
Most to approve, Mr. Chair. It's been moved and properly segmented to approve the JAG grant and support the grant for the Fairfield County Sheriff's Office. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Let the record reflect 7-0 on approving the JAG grant for the sheriff's office. Item D for County Administrator's Report was moved until after executive session. Item E, Ms. Johnson.
Counsel, you have your finance report for July 2023. Again, as usual, if you have any questions or comments, please give me a call. It's just the first month of the fiscal year, so not a lot of activity going on. Also, there seems to be a still a misunderstanding about legal services, so I was asked to explain that again. So in the fiscal year 22 audit report, legal services were well over $700,000. That account was used to pay six attorneys for various different reasons, totaling over $700,000. And those legal services also include, if you remember, the joint water system, legal services as well. So none of the expenses in fiscal year 2022 related to Smith Robinson Law Firm, of which Mr. Morgan is a partner. So I just wanted to clarify that once again. Thank you.
Clerk, the council's report.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chair, members of council. Just wanted to remind you that the Economic Development Strategic Plan Meeting is going to be held this Thursday, August the 17th, beginning at 9 a.m., and it will be held at the Midlands Technical College, Windsboro Campus.
Thank you, Dr. Roberts. Any questions on the Thursday meeting from anyone?
Just, I appreciate you moving it, keeping it in the county here, so that's, I think that's good. And does it adjourn at 1:00, is that what I saw?
Yes, sir, approximately 1:00.
All right, thank you.
They all have, you all have a copy of the agenda, and a survey went out. So if you, they did reopen the survey, so I think we need a couple more responses. So if you did not respond to the survey, it was reopened.
Thank you. Next, we are down to item 16, Second Public Comment Session, Dr. Roberts.
Yes, sir, several persons signed up to speak. Mr. Chair, first person, Jim Rex.
Good evening, I'm Jim Rex, District 2, Fairfield County. I live in Woodside Harbor, which is a community, residential community on Lake Watery. Nearly 30 years ago, I bought the property and built a house in Woodside Harbor. I think that was the first planned unit development ever approved in Fairfield County. And I bought it for two reasons. It's a beautiful site right on the lake, but I also bought it because we had in place some very strongly worded deed covenants, which restricted the use of the property for each owner who owned property there in perpetuity. And that gave me a sense of assurance that this community would remain a residential community, and my property values would be protected, not to mention the county's property tax revenues. And so here we are nearly three decades later, and we have a problem. We have a threat to the residential integrity of our community, as well as the community next door to ours, Watery Keys, which has the very same set of covenants because the same developer developed both in that period of time. The wording, it seemed at the time to be ironclad. It said that all homes would be single residence, no businesses could be conducted from the homes, and we thought that was assurances enough. Turns out that there's this national trend for short-term rentals, Verbo, B&amp;B, and others, that has really taken hold across the nation, and especially in those areas that have resort amenities, coastal communities, mountains, and lakes. And that has reared its head in our community. We now have neighbors who feel like they live next door to a Holiday Inn or a Motel 6, depending upon how many people occupy the house at a given time. 6, depending upon how many people occupy the house at a given time. Our property values are being threatened, our residency atmosphere is being violated, and we need some help from this county. The covenants are registered in this county, and they've been there for three decades, as I said. It's obvious that this was not supposed to be a commercial enterprise area, and we would like to see ordinances drafted that would protect the residential quality of this, of this property. This has been done in lots of places around the country where these short-term rentals have been more dominant. In Florida, for example, they've limited the duration of rental leases so that they have to be at least six months in duration. They've also put together formulas for determining the occupancy rate of these houses to make sure that they're safe. So that's why I and others you'll hear from in a moment are appealing to you to give us some relief in this area. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is John Steigerwald. I'm in District 2, Ms. Shirley Green. I live in a community that is Watery Keys, joins Mr. Rex here. I'm just going to read off a script here I wrote, that way I don't miss anything up. My name's John. My wife and I have been full-time residents of Fairfield County at 664 Watery Key Court in Winsborough, South Carolina. I'm here with some of my neighbors, Don Nichols, Russell Scott, Johnny Phillips, and Dan Ting. We're here in support to the efforts that Jim Rex is putting forward for an ordinance to be put in place in Fairfield County concerning the regulation of short-term rentals, as have many cities, including Richland County, just directed to the south of us just shortly. My neighbors and I have firsthand experience living beside a short-term rental. I personally, it is right next door to me. It is akin to living next to a Motel 6, and everything that comes along with that. We've had, let's see here, there is no one there to manage the property. The people that own the property actually live out of state. They have a management company that manages the property for them. I've had a neighbor call them with complaints. They basically hang up on you when you call. The people that own the property is Matthew and Vanessa Donaher. They bought the property in August 18th of 2022 and began renting it in February 17th of 2023 as a short-term daily rental. People from all over the country have been there. We've had Arkansas, Florida, North Carolina, South Carolina, Virginia, everywhere. The neighborhood has experienced contractors dumping building materials in the middle of the cul-de-sac, working late into the night, starting at 4:00 in the morning. The mail lady couldn't deliver mail, along with FedEx and of course GPS, had difficulties delivering parcels as the road was blocked by the trucks and trailers. We have had to call the sheriff numerous times for noise. The situations we have dealt with include noise, loud music, car horns slamming and closing at all hours of the night until the early morning hours, parking large trucks, trailers, ATVs, UTVs, neighbors, in the neighbors' front yards because there's no street parking on a county road. Bonfires set in the back of the yard when there was, you couldn't have fires. Prostitution, drug use, everything that, like I said, it comes along with a motel. We are experiencing in our residential neighborhood. Our covenants prohibit short-term rentals, single-family occupancy only, no businesses. We've retained an attorney, Creighton Coleman, to help us with the situation. If you have any questions, welcome to contact me. My phone number and everything is on the slide sheet.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Don Goldbach.
Good evening, Don Goldbach, District 2. And I'm also a resident on Lake Watery in this lovely neighborhood known as Woodside Harbor. So I'm here to also ask you, on behalf of other neighbors, my next-door neighbors who were great, but if they sold that property, and as Mr. Rex said, there's a nationwide effort by large companies to come in, and they have actually bought entire neighborhoods, and they turn them into rentals. And that is not what we want in Woodside Harbor, nor in Watery Keys. You know, we bought these properties because they're beautiful properties, and I think Fairfield County is really blessed to have part of Lake Watery within its jurisdiction and also provide some nice tax revenue that we can use for other services. But I'm really here to reemphasize the request of County Council that we would be very happy to work with y'all to come up with a really good, strong way to manage, restrict, whatever the word is, short-term rentals in residential communities here. You know, we've just lived there for two and a half years, but we've been property owners on Lake Watery since 2004. And we have seen kind of a migration just from Charlotte alone. I think property values at Lake Norman and Lake Wiley have gone through the roof and they've become quite crowded. So someone in Charlotte looked at a map and said, hey, there's a body of water down I-77. And they've made, there's been a lot of investment from Charlotte. But we don't want our neighborhood to turn into the situation that Mr. Steigerwald described. We live in a peaceful neighborhood, we have great, great neighbors, we help each other, and to have someone come in and just destroy that peace and that serenity is just, it's not acceptable, quite frankly. And it would also impact property values ultimately, because people would get the word, and that would not be good for anybody in the county. So again, we're really looking forward to working with y'all on coming up with a good way to manage the situation so that we don't have a repeat of what's happened just next door. So thank you very much for your time, and we appreciate it.
John Jones, District 4. Sorry I wasn't here for the last meeting, else I would have said this very same thing in the last meeting, but I was out of pocket doing a family thing up in Maryland. In Jenkinsville, they have once again cranked up the works to build a wall. A year ago, I got up here and I was at SICE screaming over the supposed wall of self-ingrandizement for one person, spending the people's money for something that somebody can look back at and say, I did that. It is absolutely ridiculous. And then nothing happened for over a year. Now, all of a sudden, here it comes again, we're going to do it. Yet all that equipment was parked out there. All that heavy equipment was parked out in front, and I bet you there was a rental on every single month. Who paid for that? Did my councilman? Absolutely not. These are the people who are forking out the money. Anytime one of you has something like that, that costs more than $1,000 of the people's money, the rest of you should stop it. It's ridiculous. It's not your money. It's theirs that you said that you would husband and use to the betterment of the entire county, not one person's ingrandizement. Sorry, I had to be the wet blanket. Thank you.
I'm going to change my name to Rip Van Winkle. It's time to show the people who elected you the same respect you demand of us. Councils should have their time to speak, and we will listen kindly. Adjust the agenda to execute this request. And note, this is the third time we're making this request. We, the public, speak last. And maybe you'll listen. We people want to have the last word at these meetings, not council members, because you're not given three minutes to speak. Your chairman is not doing anything wrong, he's just not capable of doing anything right. If we saw one of you with a pencil taking notes, we might think you're actually listening and paying attention to what the public is saying. I don't have enough time listed. All the inadequacies this council displays at these meetings. Maybe I missed the meeting when you agreed that we would defund the fire department and cancel whatever the citizens are requesting. I'll give you an example. My District 4, a woman very politely came up to this podium and requested for our District 4 council member to please look into getting the logs off her property that either the town or the state left. Those logs are still there, months later. I just saw them tonight. I'd love to hear what you think you've actually accomplished for our citizens. Okay, and maybe if you seriously tried to keep safety of all the citizens your main priority, we wouldn't feel like we elected total amateurs to watch over our community. Who among you knew that the currently permitting temporary administrator to be the one and only signature on contracts of millions of dollars? I wonder if any of you have taken the initiative to see if all those contracts have been fulfilled as agreed upon, or if you're just mailing monthly checks out for contracts that may not even be valid. It doesn't appear that you even really care if these contract services are actually being provided. Who in their right mind would allow a single employee to be the only signature on a contract? If this money was coming out of your little piggy bank, would you allow one person to be in charge of all your money, especially an employee who was suspended for six months for inappropriate behavior related to contractual relationships? I won't name names, but some of you can't even read a P&L statement. Your legal counsel bills $250 an hour while you're reading all of these ordinances. Do the billing math. Fire him tonight and hire a recent graduate. He or she can do everything we want in 40 hours for half the money. We paid over $700,000 in legal fees, and previous council paid $27 million for a settlement with Dominion. As I said, my list of incompetence is still here, and my time is almost out. And thank you for the tax increase and the new monument in Jenkinsville that no one wants. Let's hope in January you can give us better leadership. Looking forward to the county improving. Thank you for your time.
No one else signed up to speak, Mr. Chair?
Thank you, Dr. Roberts. We are down to County Council time. Any council members wish to speak? Ms. Green?
First of all, I'd like to thank the residents of Watery Keys and Woodside Harbor for coming out tonight to share your concerns. It's wonderful to have someone willing to work with the county to try to settle an issue, and I think it's going to be great once we are able to get together and really take a look at some of the ordinances that we have statewide and to see how they may be used here to benefit the citizens of your area. Thank you. I do. Oh, I'm sorry.
Ms. Warren, you go ahead.
You go ahead. Okay. We were asked to give a report for the meeting that we went to, the school, the Institute of Government. The Institute of Government is for all county officials, not just council. I talked with the deed recorder there, I talked with consultant, talked with the probate judge, administrator, and assistant administrator, and a whole lot of County Council people that were there. It was good networking and how the other counties are handling problems that we have and their day-to-day operation. It was a good, it was a good meeting, three days. I took the strategic planning, Level 1, and it was good ideas on how to incorporate them into our strategic planning meeting that we're getting ready to have on Thursday, and how to actually implement the plan after we do put it into work. Also, I took the ethical leadership and public service, Level 1, and as I said, if it's legal, then it's ethical. So then we took the legal, I took the legal issues in county government, which included the Code of Laws, the Home Rule Act, and also touched on the legal liability for the torts. Not all decisions that council make are popular, but, and it's hard to come up with solutions that everybody's happy with. We have learned, I learned that this week, last week. I arrived at 8:00 PM on Sunday, and I left Thursday morning at 6:00 to get back to work at 9:00. So that was my time there, and that was my take on it. It was a very good, informative meeting.
Thank you.
Now, real quick, I just wondered if you had any update on the acoustics that, in here?
Actually, we're trying to get another quote, because we didn't like the way the first quote came in.
Okay.
So we're still waiting on that. We should get that this week.
Okay, thank you.
I will say to the Lakewood Residents, I received several phone calls about the short-term rentals. I think Ms. Green received phone calls. Also, we have reached out to administration and our county attorney to see what procedures or policies or ordinances that we can follow to help out the citizens of Lakewood. Next, we are down to Executive Session. In Executive Session, we have Item A, receipt of legal advice and discussion of negotiations incident to propose contractual arrangements with the Fairfield Joint Water and Sewer System pursuant to South Carolina code. Also, we have Ordinance 817, Executive Session, Ordinance 818, Ordinance 819, and also the rental fee for the nonprofit organizations. It's been moved and seconded to go in Executive Session in a discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Let the record reflect 7-0. We are in Executive Session.
I don't think it's supposed to be doing no short-term rentals. It don't fucking do no short-term rentals.
Oh, man, that's crazy. It's crazy. Yeah. Then, Carolina, adventure world.
Yeah, but see, the covenants and restrictions that y'all have supersede, supersede our zone in there.
zone now.
I'll make sure you walk.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to amend ordinance number 817 by substituting as exhibit A in its entirety. The document included in the agenda packet titled Third Reading Version Inter-Governmental Sewer Infrastructure Agreement, Winsborough Connection Project. For the document included in the agenda packet titled Second Reading Version Inter-Governmental Sewer Infrastructure Agreement, Winsborough Connection Project, that was read on second reading on July 24, 2023.
Second.
It's been moved and property segmented to come out of executive session. Any discussion? I would put on the record that no action or vote was taken in executive session. All in favor? All opposed? Let the record reflect seven zero to come out of executive session. Any other motions?
Mr. Chair, I think at this point in time, if I recall correctly, we're going to bring up the ordinances nine A, nine B, and nine C. And then after discussion, or whatever takes place on that, then it would be action item number fourteen D. I believe that's the order.
Absolutely. All right, in reverence to nine A, third and final reading of ordinance number eight seventeen.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to amend ordinance number eight seventeen by substituting as exhibit A in its entirety. The document included in the agenda packet titled Third Reading Version Inter-Governmental Sewer Infrastructure Agreement, Winsborough Connection Project. For the document included in the agenda packet titled Second Reading Version Inter-Governmental Sewer Infrastructure Agreement, Winsborough Connection Project, that was read on second reading on July 24, 2023.
Second.
It's been moved and property segmented for ordinance eight seventeen. Mr. Morgan, can you explain for the public the intent of the motion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, members of council. The motion that Ms. Green made, basically, there was edits that were made from second reading to third reading in the underlying agreement, which was exhibit A. And so ultimately, instead of going forth line by line, edit by edit, the intent was to turn around and allow for the full wholesale substitution to help expedite the process. Both the second reading version and the third reading version were made as a part of the agenda packet, so the information has been properly noticed to the public.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Let the record reflect seven zero on ordinance eight seventeen. Now we are down to third and final reading, ordinance number eight eighteen.
Mr. Chairman, what happened is Ms. Green's motion was to amend ordinance number eight seventeen. Now there'll need to be a motion to approve ordinance number eight seventeen as amended.
All right.
So moved.
It's been moved and property segmented to accept as amended. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Let the record reflect seven zero to accept it as amended. Now we are down to ordinance eight eighteen.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to amend ordinance number eight eighteen by substituting as exhibit A in its entirety. The document included in the agenda packet titled Third Reading Version Inter-Governmental Sewer Infrastructure Agreement, Winsborough Connection Project. For the document included in the agenda packet titled Second Reading Version Inter-Governmental Sewer Infrastructure Agreement, Winsborough Connection Project, that was read on second reading on July 24, 2023.
Second.
It's been moved and property segmented to come out of executive session. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Let the record reflect seven zero on amending eight eighteen. Now we are down to accepting the amendment. The ordinance has amended. All in favor?
Aye.
Ms. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to accept the motion as amended.
Second.
It's been moved and property segmented. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Let the record reflect seven zero on the amended motion. Next, we are down to third and final reading, ordinance eight nineteen.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to amend ordinance eight nineteen by substituting as exhibit B in its entirety. The document included in the agenda packet titled Third Reading Version Grant Administration Agreement for the document included in the agenda packet titled Second Reading Version Grant Administration Agreement, that was read on second reading on July 24, 2023.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? It's been moved and property segmented. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion to amend ordinance number eight nineteen?
Aye.
All those opposed? Let the record reflect seven zero. The motion to amend, now is there a motion to approve ordinance eight nineteen as amended?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and property segmented. Any discussion?
Yeah, I'm going to say again, y'all heard me before. I just, I just think we need more support for the farmer's market. I brought up the option of kind of decelerating the rate over, over a month. If, if, you know, if the hours increase, the costs decrease. But anyway, that doesn't appear to be going to happen. But anyway, I just, I think we need to do some more, more support for the farmer's market. I think it's a tourism draw. It's just good for the county and the town. And anyway, that's the way I feel.
I appreciate it, Mr. Roof. You know, this is really geared toward all nonprofit organizations. I understand your concern, but, but it's, it's for all nonprofits. All in favor of the twenty-five dollar nonprofit rate?
Aye.
All opposed? Let the record reflect seven zero. On that action item, is there any other motions?
It's been moved and property segmented. Any discussion?
It's been moved and property segmented. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion to amend ordinance number eight nineteen?
Aye.
All those opposed? Let the record reflect seven zero. The motion to amend, now is there a motion to approve ordinance eight nineteen as amended?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and property segmented to approve as amended. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Let the record reflect seven zero. The motion to amend, now is there a motion to approve ordinance eight nineteen as amended?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and property segmented to approve as amended. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Let the record reflect seven zero. Now we are down to the action item for the fourteen D rental fee for nonprofit organizations.
I make a motion that we charge a nonprofit organization twenty-five dollars an hour.
Second.
It's been moved and property segmented. Any discussion?
Yeah, I'm going to say again, y'all heard me before. I just, I just think we need to have more support for the farmer's market. I brought up the option of kind of decelerating the rate over, over a month. If, if, you know, if the hours increase, the costs decrease. But anyway, that doesn't appear to be going to happen. But anyway, I just, I think we need to do some more, more support for the farmer's market. I think it's a tourism draw. It's just good for the county and the town. And anyway, that's the way I feel.
I appreciate it, Mr. Roof. You know, this is really geared toward all nonprofit organizations. I understand your concern, but, but it's, it's for all nonprofits. All in favor of the twenty-five dollar nonprofit rate?
Aye.
All opposed? Let the record reflect seven zero. On that action item, is there any other motions?
It's been moved and property segmented. Any discussion?
Yeah, I'm going to say again, y'all heard me before. I just, I just think we need to have more support for the farmer's market. I brought up the option of kind of decelerating the rate over, over a month. If, if, you know, if the hours increase, the costs decrease. But anyway, that doesn't appear to be going to happen. But anyway, I just, I think we need to do some more, more support for the farmer's market. I think it's a tourism draw. It's just good for the county and the town. And anyway, that's the way I feel.
I appreciate it, Mr. Roof. You know, this is really geared toward all nonprofit organizations. I understand your concern, but, but it's, it's for all nonprofits. All in favor of the twenty-five dollar nonprofit rate?
Aye.
All opposed? Let the record reflect seven zero. We are adjourned.